Continuing with Destination 2025 progress updates, really excited. We, as promised, we had an April Community Partnerships progress update for you. And certainly, community partnerships are a division-wide focus. But for today's update, you're going to hear from our Family and Community Engagement Team, as well as our Workforce and Career Development Team, on some specific progress related to goals in this arena. So it looks like Adrian's going to kick us off, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Shea, School Board members, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm Adrian Cole Johnson, Chief of Family and Community Engagement. And today, we will be sharing Community Partnership goal updates for Destination 2025, our Division Strategic Plan. Across areas of safety and wellness, academic growth, equity and opportunity, and of course, relationships, our strategic plan cornerstones are steeped in our ability to collaborate with internal and external partners. The goal of cultivating and maintaining meaningful relationships for student enrichment are opportunity touchpoints found throughout our work in HCPS. I'd be remiss if I did not share that this month is also Global Volunteer, sorry, Global Volunteer Month, celebrating the power of people who tackle society's challenges and build stronger, more vibrant communities through volunteerism and everyday actions. Whether discussing large corporations such as Meta, Altria, or Capital One, or some of the local nonprofits and enterprises that you will hear more about today, Henrico truly exemplifies community when it is time to support our students. So volunteers, partners, and Henrico community, thank you for all that you do. Our village is stronger because of it. Specific to today's update, this afternoon, we're sharing insights from Family and Community Engagement as we are redefining the foundation of our partnership approaches as a district while also weaving collaborative partnerships throughout our programmatic efforts. We will also hear from our friends and colleagues in workforce and career development, national leaders, on what building effective partnerships looks like. Considering how vast and diverse our county is, it has been important that we streamline a process that works for our unique efforts. Within FACE, we often look at school-based and community-based, I'm sorry. Within FACE, we often look at school-based and community-based as a means to identify the types of impact we seek to maintain. It's important to note that our objectives to support students through family, community, and school partnerships are alive and active in several ways. Our school-based partnerships show up via the work of our family advocates, as they are encouraged to manage at least three to five partnerships in their schools. We also have engagement impact committees that bring together staff, parents, community, and sometimes students in some of our secondary schools. Our community-based partnerships show up via our district-wide engagement efforts, such as bridge builders workshops and sessions, and our numerous collaborative committees that span various agencies and departments in Henrico. Our goal is to model the process of collective impact while prioritizing family and community voice within the school system. I'd like to introduce our Community Partnerships and Resource Coordinator, Virginia Hanson. While housed in the Office of Family and Community Engagement, we have scaled this position as a division-wide support for guiding an impact-based approach for school-community-based partnerships. She will provide details on our unique partnership approach and framework.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Chair Shea, School Board members, and Dr. Cashwell. As introduced by Chief Adrian, I am Virginia Hanson, the Community Engagement Coordinator for Partnerships and Resources. In keeping with the Family and Community Engagement commitment to students and families, we have outlined an effective partnership strategy to guide our approach. Genuine, reciprocal, and intentional connections are the characteristics that move partnerships from good to great. As we build upon this model, we are also beginning to learn what indicators to consider when evaluating the success of our collaborations, thus leading us to explore the best way to collect and manage data. Family advocates and other designated school personnel were encouraged to connect with prospective businesses, faith-based groups, and community organizations, and communicate terms for collaboration or a partnership that supported their school quality and/or PBIS goals. These impact goals are then outlined on our partnership agreement form, allowing space for reciprocal planning and a shared vision for our school communities. The form and the details of this process is live on our website and have also been disseminated to school communities for completion. Once both parties have completed the agreement, the partnership form is submitted to me, where it is then recorded in our community partnership records. Our goal is not only to provide a uniform process for schools, but also retain information in a centralized way, with the expectation of learning across sites and throughout the district. While there are several active and successful collaborations in motion, I'd like to highlight a couple here. John Roth Middle School has partnered with Amber Lancaster and Start One Spark to provide personal sports equipment and cover instrument rental fees, club dues, and other costs associated with extracurricular activities. Because of this partnership, many students and families are relieved of their financial worries that come with being an athlete. To date, a partnership valued at $15,000. Across the county, faith-based leaders and their congregations have tapped into the needs of our area schools and donated school supplies, additional food support, and various items to support school stores and incentive programs. For example, Ridge Elementary has partnered with Wellborn Methodist United Church, and Wilder Middle School has established an ongoing partnership with Anointed New Life Church. Also, in an effort to stay more connected with our faith leaders, HCPS hosts a biannual gathering to listen, learn, and share as a larger community. As you can see in the video, as you would have saw in the video, this winter, HCPS partnered with the newly-formed Henrico Community Food Bank, with a mission to provide access to nutritious food in an equitable and dignified manner to those in need. The Food Bank identified HCPS as an anchor collaborator in hosting their first food drive and distribution, with targeted support for Henrico students and families during the winter break. While this partnership was led by the Family and Community Engagement Office, it was an opportunity for all school communities to provide deeper support to families that are foods insecure. In just three weeks, we identified 200-plus HCPS families in need before the winter break, and we were able to meet the demand through resource sharing. Collecting 6,160 pounds of food from Henrico County citizens and partners, it allowed us to support and serve 420 unique individuals. Factoring in 88 volunteers, there is an estimated partnership value of $6,250. This partnership will remain intact, as Henrico County Food Bank is providing a community-based layer of nutritional support to our students and families. In response to the discontinued federal and state aid for food support, on March 30th, our office partnered with workforce and the Virginia Lions Club to organize a spring distribution in preparation for our district-wide spring break. 204 boxes of food were prepared and distributed, and 185 gift cards were extended to families when the allotted number of boxes were no longer available. Approximately 500 families were impacted in the coming months, and we hope to increase our capacity to serve more families in Henrico. And now I will turn the presentation over to Mac Beaton, as he highlights CTE approaches and updates regarding community partnerships. Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. You know, partnerships should be more than just a one-time ask. They have to grow. When you're thinking about the meaning of a partnership, you need to consider a couple of things. You need to consider the value, the outcomes, the goals, and what this partnership should look like. We always talk about the why of what we do. With partnerships, the same is true, but for both parties. Questions to ask when considering and talking about partnerships: Why would I want to invest in this relationship? And what do I hope to gain from this relationship? What is the real value of this partnership? What will be the outcomes of this partnership as it's developed over time? Is an effective partnership voice and choice, is that represented? Both are important. In an effective partnership, you have to keep in mind the answers to certain questions. Is it about the connection and the relationship that you and the partnership have together? A rule in CTE is that you don't just ask, but offer. Everyone likes to receive, then it's a whole lot easier to give. Are you involved in this relationship or committed to this relationship? How would you define the difference between the two? It's easy to write a check, but to be committed, it takes effort, and it's work and difficult, and you have to continue at this. What are the goals of a partnership? You can't just ask. True partnerships provide intrinsic and extrinsic rewards for both parties. The personal part of a partnership is crucial. What connects you with the partner? What connects parties to be willing to invest the time to grow this partnership? At this point in time, I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Beverly Cox, Specialist for Workforce and Career Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Cashwell. Such mutually beneficial partnerships play an essential role in creating opportunities for students to be successful in the future, often providing supports and resources to meet staff, student, and community needs that go beyond what is typically available through schools alone. Whether it is quality-based learning experiences, such as job shadowing, internships, and externships, co-teaching that provide an in-the-field learning support, or career preparation activities like mock interviews, our community partners readily step up when the partnership is nurtured. By checking in and asking ways we can support them, we keep the partnership ongoing. For example, Dominion Energy is one of our sustainable partnerships that is ever-evolving based on student, business, and community needs. Just this school year, Dominion Energy provided elementary students at Longan with career exposure activities related to Virginia's 17th Career Cluster Energy. They participated. You got it?
I'm trying to find where you hit.
Next one.
It's not there.
It's showing in our board docs presentation, the Dominion Energy slide. It just doesn't seem to be there. Rest assured, we can see it.
Okay, it's their logo and a couple of pictures of the event. Okay. They participated in both HCPS's Life Ready Expo and College and Career Night. They were a contributing sponsor of the Career Rodeo last month, and even set up a booth with hands-on activities for the middle school students who attended the event. The partnership between Dominion Energy and our department continues to further bloom as they approached us with a new opportunity for students by donating seeds and equipment for a pilot micro-farm at the Advanced Career Education Center at Hermitage. Here, students from the Greenhouse Management and Culinary Arts Programs will be able to learn firsthand from indoor farming, from seed, to harvest, to table. Now we're right. Community partnerships provide relevant, diverse, onsite and offsite K-12 career experiences that enhance authentic learning opportunities, whether it's through school career days or district-level events like the Life Ready Expo. Business partners play a vital role in students identifying their interests, talents, and work values, as well as gaining greater knowledge and understanding of career opportunities for the future. The Department of Workforce and Career Development hosts three major events in partnership with our business community. During the Life Ready Expo, students and their families explore career pathways and talk directly with businesses. Since its conception, hundreds of community partners have come together to make this a meaningful career exploration experience for thousands of students, grade seven through 12, and their families. Our first Life Ready Expo in 2019 brought together over 150 business partners and 4,000 attendees. In 2020, we pivoted to seven virtual mini-expos. And this past October, we were back in person hosting a modified Life Ready Expo, capping the event to 80 business partnerships with 2,000 in attendance. Last month, we welcomed the return of the Career Rodeo Skills Challenge. With the assistance of community partners like Richmond Raceway Complex, Hef, Dominion Energy, and Rico USA, we were able to host nearly 500 A-Center students who showcased their skills learned in the classroom in front of 250 business and community partners. During the event, 400 resumes were requested by potential employers in attendance. A designated place where businesses could talk with students on the spot was available. This year, we added a career exploration component by inviting each middle school to bring students out to the Career Rodeo in order to witness firsthand our A-Center students in action and learn about career pathways. While waiting their turn to enter the rodeo, middle schoolers got to interact with businesses like Anton Parr, Dominion Energy, and the FBI of Richmond. As the middle school students explored, they were able to connect their interests with possibilities, planting career seeds along the way. And on May 24th, we will hold our fourth Letter of Intent Signing Day, where community partners join us in celebrating students entering the workforce, as they take the skills learned in their A-Center programs into the new careers. However, learning does not stop there, as training, apprenticeships, and college reimbursements are some of the employee benefits these grads will receive along with the paycheck. Participating businesses are spotlighted as well during the ceremony. Henrico County received national acclaim for the program in 2018, which has since been replicated in 49 states and Canada. With the help of our community partners, we are changing the narrative for students going into the world of work upon graduation. Now I'll turn the presentation back over to Mr. Beaton.
There are three main focal points for purposeful community partnerships and engagement. First, serving our staff by helping improve academic outcomes. Serving our students by providing opportunities. And serving our families by providing resources. Family and community involvement foster partnerships among schools, family and community groups, and individuals. These partnerships result in sharing and maximizing resources. And they also help children and youth develop healthy behaviors and promote healthy families. Community partnerships offer communities the opportunities to support the needs of children and families with intentional, enhanced, and support academic, social, and emotional health experience in the school setting, as well as local agency and community-based sites. At this point in time, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, team. I'll start on this side this time. Any questions? All right, I'll start with Ms. Atkins.
Chairwoman Shea, I don't have questions, but I do have thoughts. I'm going to read what I wrote so that I can stay focused, because I'm a bit emotional, be with the information that you've shared. So I just want to say, this is a lovely example of taking in quality information, reading signals of change, and moving forward proactively to serve students, staff, and school communities. I'm taken by that small phrase, "We don't need handouts. We deserve hand-ups and handshakes." I love that. And so it kind of took me. So I want to just acknowledge that I did see that, and that means a lot, not just to me, but I can tell you to thousands more. I'm also a very proud School Board member, excited to share your work wherever I am, as I represent this title. I'm a resident that's grateful for the many opportunities. So removing this School Board and just being a neighbor, this impacts me in that way, and so very grateful for that. And then I also just want to say that because of your work, I am also a recipient of your goods and services. I'm a recipient of being able to go and grab a box of canned goods. Because when you're hungry, your title doesn't matter. So I want you to understand the impact that teamwork has, and how community partnerships make a difference. And you and your teams personally have done that for me in those three ways that I've shared. And what's even better is that there are thousands of people, just like me and my family, that feel the same way. You make a difference, and the partnership, not only outside of your teams, but within your teams, is so clear. It's so loving to see, because we know we need a little bit more love. And I see it. I won't be religious in this moment, but I just need to know that I feel that vibe, and I feel it very strongly. And that when we can be examples of how we work together in partnership and truth, goodness comes. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogden?
Thank you. First of all, welcome back, Bev.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you in person for a change, as opposed to just exchanging emails. But I want to just basically thank you for the work. I don't have questions either, but like Ms. Atkins, I will just make a couple of comments. The overwhelming thing that I heard you say so many times is support for students, support for kids, support for families, serving our families. Support and serve just kept coming up over and over again in what y'all were talking about, which I think is at the crux of what you do. It's got to be incredibly rewarding. It's incredibly rewarding to see it, but to do it, I can imagine, is incredible. But I just see it as a win-win for our partners and for our students, because I know, I've talked to some of our partners that have been, you know, at the Life Ready Expo or one thing or another, and, you know, you run into somebody and they talk about the great things that this group is doing, and how they were able to connect with future employees, which is, that's the crux of the whole thing right there, is we want, we talk about wanting our kids to be life-ready. But then, when they do that, they achieve that, they get that industry certification, they go into a job, and then you hear later from an employee how pleased they are with the student that they found. You know, you know your work is being successful, and you've seen it for the kid. You probably don't hear from later. But, you know, that, to me, was just amazing, the first time that happened to me. But I just think that the partnership aspect of this is so vitally important, because we need to connect the school system with the community. There, you know, it's just that partnership is so key, and the fact that y'all have done so much that you have to develop, I just think is so impressive. It is the key to our success. It helps our kids, and it achieves the goal that we want for all of our students. So for all of that, I'm really, really appreciative. And the fact that y'all are bringing the middle school kids in to the Life Ready, kudos for that. Getting them in there, letting them see what's coming, so they can do their course selections and have a taste of what's available later. I'd love to get fifth graders involved somehow. Wouldn't you love that? So they can see what they need to take in middle school and then in high school, what's out there for them. But anyway, kudos. Thank y'all so much. And again, welcome back, Bev.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogden. Ms. Concello?
Yeah, I think I'm going to be a little chatty versus asking questions as well. I totally support the partnerships, and it's the partnerships, whether it's supporting our students, families, anyone supporting our staff, because it's all about the students. So anyone involved in the partnership is just so valuable. And one of the comments I hear often from hanging out in the CTE world and a business advisory committee is how Mr. Beaton says, "He never asks folks for things. Folks just want to know how they can get involved and give, and what can they do? How can they help us?" And I just think that's interesting, because a lot of folks would think that it would work differently, right? Is that you're out in the community asking for things. And I just think that's a, it's a great mindset that you have, and I think it's why a lot of our business partnerships are so successful. And I can't speak highly enough about the work Ms. Cox and Mr. Beaton have done, nor can I say enough about our FACE team. I mean, the work that you've done in our communities throughout the pandemic and as we move forward, you've just transformed, you've transformed, you're responsive to what's going on. And I don't mean responsive as in reactive. You're proactive in it. But there are so, there are so many needs we didn't even know we had, and you've not only identified them, you know, with the help of our school leaders and our advocates, but we've met, you know, we've met the needs. We continue to do so as we move forward. One of my questions is, how can we support you, all of you, in the partnership work? And then how can we, it's my understanding, having attended the rodeo, that not all middle schools participated in this opportunity. So I would like to maybe hear about that offline, how we can get all middle school students access to the Career Rodeo, because it really was something else. And seeing the looks on the faces of the students, not just getting to read about a class online, they got to see it in person. And whether or not they were choosing that as a career, they may be interested in a class. I mean, we don't know. And the students don't know. And just that in-person event was just so powerful. So really, just thank you for the work you do. And any way we can support you, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Concello. Reverend Cooper?
Again, I just echo the sentiments of my peers in regards to the work that you all are doing collectively and collaboratively. Thank you again for that. Quick question from Slide 6. Could you briefly kind of share with us the review process for selecting the partnerships? And once a potential partner has submitted a partnership inquiry form, and any screening process that occurs for the purposes of safety and alignment with HCPS?
Great question. And so what you see to the left, when we talk about inquiries, when the partnership, the partner will fill out the form, but we really work through these three Cs of connecting, communicating, and collaborating. And so while the form is a sheet of paper, it's typically a meeting with the school where they're sitting down to talk about what their goals are, where they're headed towards as a community, so that the partner and the school community can really get on the same page about what the commitment will be. I think career and workforce do a great job of talking about sustainable, and we often say, high-impact partnerships. Within that process, there is a volunteer form that everyone fills out if they're working within the schools. So they still go through that process as well for safety.
I mean, thank you. That's so important, because it's not just you just show up and you just start working, but it's definitely an intentional process in place to ensure the alignment plus the safety screening. So thank you so much for that. And the last question, you all have established many essential and strategic partnerships, and we've become familiar with many of them locally, as well as statewide and nationally. Our schools are diverse. Our schools are diverse. Our students and staff represent so many countries across the globe. And so do we have any international partnerships? And are we looking to expand our global footprint?
Well, actually, it's funny. We actually do. And I'm going to give an example of one of them that I think is very powerful. Anton Parr, which is actually a Swedish company, was very excited at the way that we go about preparing young people for the workforce, because their education system is truly a dual prep program. While you're in high school, part of their goal is to prepare young people for a pathway right up front, so that when they leave high school, they already know the why. And they were truly impressed that the why was a piece of our conversation, as well as the understanding of the triple E's, enrolled, enlisted, or employed, which leads to the why. We have several other companies, such as Houni, which we've been partnering with for years, which is actually a German company. Train International, which is Ireland, I believe, is their headquarters. So yes, while a lot of companies have their, some offices here in the United States, their corporate offices are actually overseas.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I could wax poetic about both of your departments all day. And even though we're running ahead of schedule on the meeting, I will save us all. But you know, Ms. Cole Johnson, I think about when you came into this role, into your role, and you joined the division of a budding department. And then, you know, that was only, that was primarily serving Title I needs, and how you have blossomed to the department to serve the whole county in so many facets. And you were thrown into COVID in 2020, shortly after you came on. And the way that you, you just didn't stop, right? And you just kept pushing, and you just kept filling those gaps. And how it has made tactile differences for our students in terms of their physical needs, but also pushing in with... That's my mom. All right. But tactile, meeting our families, and just all the social, emotional needs of our students and families. Thank you. Thank you for that. And I particularly took note of this process that came up here on Slide 6 that Reverend Cooper was talking about, and how responsive that is to the early August meeting we had with the faith partners. And we had so many people who wanted to partner with our schools, but they didn't really know how to go about it. They didn't really know how to find the best fit. And it was, "Well, talk to my department. Talk to my department." Which you've done a tremendous job, but to streamline that and have it in one place. And with website revamp, making it more accessible, like, that's key. People who want to help, being able to plug in. So thank you for being responsive and streamlining that. And I'm hoping we'll see many more fruitful, high-impact, sustainable partnerships from that. And then, Mr. Beaton and Ms. Cox, you know I have a heart for CTE. And Ms. Consela and I get to meet with the Business Advisory Council once a month and hear about, you know, not only from you, but straight from our community partners about things. And you know, how we're truly reaping the harvest of partnerships that have been cultivated for years. And like the Richmond Raceway comes to mind, and how it started as a small partnership on one project, but the students were so responsive. And it wasn't a handout. It was a handshake, and it was a two-way street. That's grown so much on our opportunities for things like the Raceway graduations and using their space for our rodeo and all of those things. And as well as having vaccinations and having our architecture firm we work with come work with our CAD students. You know, that's not something that's manufactured. That's authentic, and that's organic, and it's because of sustainable relationships. And so I'll talk all day about how y'all are national leaders in that. But I just want to thank you for that, for really growing relationships that are not superficial. They're not for a photo op or a recognition or a feel-good charity moment. They're authentic investments that pay dividends for both our students and our community. And I think that's what it's all about. So thank you so much.
All right. And I will also thank our team for that comprehension. And you know, I think I teed this item up saying that, you know, this is a Destination 2025 update related to community partnerships, and that it just represents a fraction of the work being done as it aligns to our goals. And what an incredible presentation, tremendous work. And it does only represent, I think, just a fraction of the work that's being done by the team in front of us and so many others across the school division in our effort to truly support our families, students and the families in service of our community. So appreciate all you do. Thank you for this presentation.